Thank you Chair, I can confirm that we are now live.
Great, thank you Simon. Welcome everyone to the July 23 Heritage Advisory Committee meeting. I'd like to start off with a land acknowledgement. So the Halifax Regional Municipality is located at Mi'kmaqki, the ancestral and territorial and traditional lands of the Mi'kmaq people. The municipality acknowledges the peace and friendship treaty signed in this territory and recognizes that we are all treaty people. Alright, so the approval of the Order of Business and any additions and deletions? Simon, is there any additions or deletions?
Thank you Chair, I can confirm that there have been no requests for additions or deletions for today's.
Thank you. And would any members like to move any items? Being, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Order of Business.
It's so move.
Oh, right?
Yeah.
Second it.
The second it, perfect. Others in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. So, I'll call for the, any declarations for conflicts of interest as a agenda item? Being great. So, up next is case 800583, 2025/2026 Financial Incentives Program for Schmidville and Old South Suburb Heritage Conservation Districts, and I'd invite Mr. Gong to make the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Can you see my screen?
Yeah, yes.
Alright. Good afternoon Chair and members of HAC. My name is Shao Tio Gong and I'm a planning one with HR Heritage Property Program. Today I would like to present you the case H00583 2025/2026 Financial Incentives Program for Schmidville and Old South Suburb Heritage Conservation Districts.
Are you wearing a microphone there? Are you wearing a microphone?
Uh, yeah, I'm wearing a microphone. So the sound quality is not good?
No, it's not good, a little choppy. Maybe I want to move the microwave, microphone a little further away because it just, it just sounds so choppy.
Okay, is that better? Is this better?
Not much.
Okay, uh, let me check my setting. Is this better?
Still kind of broken up by day, by times.
Okay, I didn't know I'm using the microphone from, like to be the microphone in my laptop.
Yeah, it sounds rattly.
Yeah.
Alright, I guess we can just use this low quality presentation, sounds? So, continue to do this presentation. The Financial Initiative Programs or the FIP programs specifically targets the conservation of contributing heritage resource and the revaluation of all existing buildings located in the Schmidville and Old South Suburb Heritage Conservation Districts. The program's guideline and budget was approved by Regional Council on March 23rd, 2021 through an administrative order which includes the rules and operation guidelines for this program running over a span of five years. This program will end this year, so this year would be the last year for the, for all applications. The FIP program provides two types of grants, conservation grants and functional improvement grants. The conservation grants are very like our annual heritage institute program provide financial support to projects that preserve, rehabilitate and reserve character defining elements on the exterior of contributing heritage resource. This grant will cover 50% of the cost of eligible works. Every eligible properties can receive a maximum of two grants and $50,000 during the five years program. Function, functional improvement grants, on the other hand, provide financial support to the projects that improve the overall quality of the existing building system, including the improvement of accessibility, HVAC, electrical, structural system and the necessary improvement to meet the current building code. The grant will cover 15% of the cost of all eligible works. Every eligible property can receive a maximum of two grants and up to $800,000 during the five years program. For the application progress, all applications are accepted between January 1st and March 1st annually. Heritage staff ensure the proposed work in the application meets all the criteria, all the eligibility criteria. Then staff will score and rank each application to prioritize, to prioritize them. This is a scoring system we're using for prioritizing applications. The consideration includes, is this property a heritage property or a contributing resource? Is this a first time application? Is this application supported by a conservation plan? Is the work include structural restorations? Is the application improve the integrity? Is the application submit as one or two or more applications for attached buildings? Is the work visible? And is the application relate to a building in a poor condition? So, the 2025/2026 FIP program has received eight intent applications. Six application applied for conservation grants only and two applications apply both the conservation and functional improvement grants. The total budget for this year is $300,000. According to the administrative order, 20% or $60,000 should be prioritized for the functional improvement projects and 80% or $240,000 should be prioritized for the conservation projects. The total grants requested by the two functional improvement applications is about $30,000, which is less than the allocated budget. Therefore, staff recommends approving those two functional improvement grants. The total grants requested by the eight conservation grants applications is about $361,000, which exists the remaining budget. Therefore, staff recommending, staff recommends approving the applications who received the highest score in the evaluation. So, after evaluation and the distribution of the budget, the recommend grant receipts are listed in this slide. We recommend approving, we recommend approving application, application 003 and application 008 for the functional improvement grants. Application 003 to application 008 receiving the conservation grants because they receive the highest evaluation score. Please note that that conservation projects that exist $100,000 can receive a functional, functional improvement grant for the existing portion as well. So, application 005, 006 and 007 are recommended for receiving some functional improvement grants as well, even though their proposed projects are only, their proposed projects only includes conservation works. In summary, the recommend applications are 003 to 008. The total, the total amount for recommended conservation grants is about $265,000. The total amount for recommended financial improvement grant is about $30,000. In addition to the approval, staff also recommend including the application 001 and application 002 as a standby grant. This means if an approved project does not proceed or incur expense below the estimate amount, excess fund will relocate to the standing by list applications. The total grant amount requested by standby applications is about $96,000. In the next few slides, I show you all the applications we received this year. So, first application for the recommend, we can receive the positive recommend is 1280 Wright Avenue. This application including conservation projects and functional improvement projects, conservation projects include painting and exterior restoration, functional improvement projects including electrical plumbing, heating system and other interior improvements. The total, the recommended conservation grant is about $18,000. To recommend functional improvement grant is about three, seven, $7,700. Application 004 is from 1358 Queen Street. The proposed work is a conservation work to replace all the wood windows and restore the ceilings. Recommend conservation grant is about $49,000. Application 005 receiving from, receiving from 5177, 37 Morris Street. The proposed work is to replace a wood window, replace the dormer, repair roof and real wall siding. The recommended conservation grant is $50,000. As mentioned earlier, the portion exists $100,000 will also receive a functional improvement grant in this case, which is about $4,600. Application 00, application 006 is a neighbor of the last application, address at 5139 Morris Street. The proposed, the proposed work is to replace wood windows with repair dormers, repair roof and the wall siding. The recommended conservation grant is $50,000. Also, a functional improvement grant on the amount of $2,600. Application 007 is from 5174 Bishop Street. The proposed work is to replace wood, the wood windows, repair roof, repair dormers, repair the foundation and replace the siding. The recommend, the recommended conservation grant is $50,000. The recommended functional improvement grant is about $200. Our last application of receiving the positive recommendations is 57 or 5647 Morris Street. The proposed project is to replace wood windows, report in foundation, restore wood exterior and paint the house. The application also includes, also include functional improvement projects such as electric, electric system, heating system, plumbing and the missing walls. The recommended, the recommended conservation grant is about $40,000. The recommended functional improvement grant is about $22,000. And application 001 is the first standby application received, receiving from 1345 Dresden Road. This is a non-contributing resource, this is a non-contributing resource and this is the proposed work is to replace the exterior siding and wood, and wood, wood compliments. Compliments. And the recommend, the recommended conservation grant is about $43,000. The second, the second standby applications is from 1328 Holly Street. The proposed work is to replace wood windows and replace the siding. The recommended conservation grant is is, is about 70, $38,000. The recommended functional improvement grant is about $6,500. This application received only two because this was a second time application and and which is the lowest score among all the applications. And finally, there is, this is the recommendations for the 2025/2026 FIP program for you to consider it.
Thank you Gong. So, what do we, someone to talk? So, I guess I'll get a motion to bring this to the floor. I can read it in and then I'll ask for a mover and a second or so.
Mr. Chair, I think Councillor Hensby want to say something?
Yeah, Councillor Hensby?
I'll wait till the motions on the floor first.
Great.
Yep. Also, if, just for procedure purposes, if someone who is not the chair can read the motion, that would be preferred.
Perfect, perfect. So, I'll ask someone to make the move, motion?
I'll move it then since I want to ask some questions. It is recommended Heritage Advisory Committee recommended reach the council that want to prove the financial center program application list and attachment aid conditional upon the applicant's compliance in section 7 and 36, 39 of the administrative order number 2020005ADM and require with specified attachment C being satisfied and two, approve the reallocation of excess financial incentive program funds to the standby list properties. The attachment B, if an improved project, an attachment A does not proceed or incurs expenses below the estimated amount, conditional upon the applicant's compliance in section 7 and 36, 39 of the administrative order 2020005ADM with the requirement specified attachment C being satisfied.
I'll second.
And.
And Councillor Hensby?
Yeah, the only questions I have, if you were showing me pictures of these houses, quite a few of them are obvious that they're heritage properties, but I had a little difficulty trying to appreciate the very first one. I was going, what did the original house look like? When I, when I saw the reporters going, that looks like a rather modern kind of additional addition. So, I was kind of wondering what the original house looked like? And, and then also on the first one of the standby list was another one that I thought that said, what's, I'm trying to recall what was historical significance of that because it looks, it looks so modern? And that's what I was trying to figure out of, what, what, what was the feature of that particular property? The first one there was on 1820 Wright Avenue and it's going, I'm looking, I was going, I see some heritage characteristics, but I'm trying to picture what the original house looked like. All this, and then the rest of it was quite obvious, but, and then again, the very first one on the standby list is going, why, like, I'm trying to recall what the heritage certificates of that design or house was because one below it on Hollister is quite obvious. So, I just, if you clarify that for me, that'd be great.
Yeah, through the chair to the councillor. So, the, the applications, application, application 003, 1280 Wright Avenue was identified, identified as a contributing resource in the Schmidville, Schmidville HCD plan and I need to check the, need to check the plan to see why this was identified as a contributing resource, but I believe the plan, I'm making the plan, making the plan, making the plan, seeing this house has some certain of heritage integrity and heritage value in it. In terms of the 1345 Dresden Road, this house was not, was not a contributing resource in the HCD and as you mentioned, it looked like a modern building, which is a modern building. However, the FIP, the FIP administrative order also allowing non-contributing resource apply for the, applying for projects such as using the, using some historical appropriate materials such as wood materials and also allows them to apply for grants. Even though they are, the application will be depriorized by our scoring system, but they still can apply for grants and they can, because, because we believe that those historical appropriate materials can contribute to the general appearance and general integrity of the HCD, even though it's not a heritage property or contributing resource.
So, I understand the need for certain materials being utilized, but is 1345 Dresden Road a heritage property, registered heritage property?
No, no, it's not a heritage property and not a contributing resource within any HCD. It's a modern building.
So, why wasn't able to apply for this program? So, I'm trying to figure this, doesn't seem to fit into the purpose of the program.
Yeah, so, so Chair to the, so Chair to the, to the councillor, as I mentioned before, the FIP program also allow non-contributing resource to apply for grants if they are using some historical, historical appropriate, appropriate materials in the, in the, in the exterior, on the exterior, even though it's not a contributing resource because I, I guess, I guess who drafts, who drafts, who drafts the FIPAO believes those those, those projects, even though not, not on, not on contributing resources or heritage property, are still improve the general, the general environment of, of the HCD?
Well, for instance, the one on Dresden Road, I would have to see the rest of the streetscape to see if it fits in with, if there's any heritage registered properties on Dresden Road to see if this fits in. If they want to compliment it, that's great. But, you know, the one on Hollister, application 2602, right away, I said, yes, that's, that's one of the heritage properties. Yes, we should help that out. So, so. One more down, one more picture down. That one, yes. So, like I see no problem with having that on standby, if any resources available, but I had difficulty on application 2601. I said, I don't see any character defining elements or, or, or it's a registered property or not. So, I said, why are we giving money to that possible application? That's, I found that a little difficult to accept.
Uh, yeah, I, I agree with you about the, the, the AO was, the AO, the AO, the program AO allows that and we just to operate the AO according to the rules.
If that is the case, or if you have these two on standby, I'd rather see application number two get funded before application one. Application, in my opinion, is more significant in characteristics than the first one.
I, I do agree, do agree. Uh, are we able to make a amendment to the motion to include that? Or is that just some direction we can give to the planning staff? Simon?
I think this is a question I should defer to some extent to planning staff on. I think the way that the motion is currently crafted, the, I believe that the backups don't have any prioritization scheme. It's just, they, they are, you know, the backups. So, to introduce that, I'm not sure if that, you know, what the consequences of doing so would be. There is a potential concern about meeting the, the terms of the enabling statute. Just to ensure that, you know, any decision there is, is bare and open. So, I would defer to staff on any of those questions, but I think we would have to, it would be a significant change based on the way that there's a recommendation before us right now.
But the question I would ask, the application number, is that just based on the, when the application was received and you got, you got the application number because of date? Like, like I'm saying is that if I was to prioritize the applications to be in next standing, I'd give application number two a higher priority than application one?
We can do that?
Yeah.
Sure. So, I can just jump in here briefly. Jesse Morton, Principal Planner of HRN's Heritage Team. So, kind of as Simon alluded to, the staff recommendations are set up. So, one part of the recommendation is who is receiving the grant. The second part is who would be put on the standby list. So, if there's any changes to those, it would have to be, we would have to have an amended motion to reflect that. And kind of as I think Curt and Gong both alluded to here is that on the standby list, there isn't a clear prioritization within the recommendation that's included in the report. So, if that is something that the agency want to change, it would be possible, but we would also have to make sure that it does align with the administrative order for this program.
Well, Simon, if I can make an amendment to the motion and instead on the standby list, I would give precedence or priority to application 2602 before 26001.
So, why don't I, we just enable some further discussion while I just craft a little bit of, take a crack at sort of making a first draft of that. I, I think as staff alluding, there is a desire to ensure that that is consistent with the AO1 or sorry, with the AO rather. If there is a need to look at that, there may be a need to consider a deferral potentially, just to ensure that, you know, directions given to council is consistent. I'm not sure. I just want to, to raise the, the issue potentially something we may have to, to get an answer on.
Well, if that's the case, then I would say why we defer the standby list or approve every, defer the standby list, waiting for a staff report or a supplemental report. But I would give precedence of a registered heritage property over and above a property that just has, you know, it, it met the so-called definition of the administrative order, but it might, doesn't fit these, the purpose of the program.
Okay. Um, so from understanding, just approving the, so just, so for the motion to just include part one?
Yeah.
Okay. To make that amendment, can we have a second? The Hensby, Councillor Hensby?
Oh, second.
Okay, Rosa, I saw Rosa.
Okay.
Okay, great. Um, so, Simon, do we need to read that back?
If I can, if I can just suggest a brief alternative, I'm not sure if this is potentially viable. You could ask to split the motion into two, to approve part one and to defer part two, and that would potentially come back to a future meeting. Just pausing for comments and staff, just to ensure that's consistent with, you know, timelines, direction that staff needs. That's an option that I believe we could pursue here.
Okay. To Gong and Jesse, is that, is that something that can be accommodated?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, this is Jesse. Again, skimming through the FIP program administrative order might need a little more time just to verify all the details, but I guess today we are looking for at least the first part of that motion to be passed because some of these individuals have been waiting to confirm that they're able to proceed with some of their work. confirm that they're able to proceed with some of their work. So the first part of the recommendation is quite important. Uh, the standby list. Um. Yeah, I don't see anything in the A O upon preliminary review that suggests the H A C couldn't prioritize one of those applications over the other, but it wouldn't hurt to defer that to the next meeting, just to verify and these individuals. Uh, since they're going on the standby list, I wouldn't see any kind of complications to that. I mean, this change wouldn't uh this amendment wouldn't really delay our kind of messaging to them. Like, we would already be able to tell them that they weren't successful in receiving a grant and that we would have to follow up uh in regards to their seeding in terms of the standby list.
Um, so following procedure, um, how do we go about this to get the vote from the uh committee to s- split these two up? So I'm not, we're not just bulldozing people's thoughts.
So um, I can speak briefly to procedure, uh, any motion, uh, it's, you know, a two-part uh or three-part or however many. Uh, any member can request as a right to uh split that uh motion up and to um uh to vote on those separately. Uh, so we would just uh 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 vote on those uh parts of the motion separately. And I would suggest that uh when part two comes up uh for a vote, if uh members can uh uh make a a request at that time, uh, just to defer that to a future meeting.
Okay, okay. So can we have him uh someone to make a motion to uh split the uh
So move.
Part, okay, in a secondary.
There's, there's people's got their hands up.
I would just add some more questions um about the buildings and I guess the decision-making. Um, I I do understand why non-heritage buildings are given grants. I mean, if you want to incentivize um, using building materials that make it tie into um, the 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 heritage or the the context of the area and other heritage buildings. I understand that. So I don't think it's bad that it's receiving funding. I I do agree that the priority can be changed. Um, I was just gonna ask how often it happens? Or how how often that backup list actually gets used? Has it ever been used? Is it? Because it doesn't seem like there's a um, a process for for figuring out the uh.
Uh. So the chair to the uh to to the H C member, yes, uh, this is the first time we use the standby list and because uh we, this program usually uh has uh has eight thousand, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars in ba- annual budget and in the first two years and we cut it to cut it to five hundred thousand dollars during the pandemic and for the last year is further cut it to two hundred thousand dollars, which uh causes this situation that we cannot uh accommodate all applications and but however, uh, all the uh all the uh prior- prioritization uh criteria was right in the A O and it's uh uh already set down. So all this uh so applications uh being uh are being recommended to approve were uh uh were part of the part of the part of the original um uh part of the originals, original thought from the A O.
So, uh, thank you. Um, so do we need a vote on splitting this motion? Or is that just?
No, that's uh just as a right. Uh, so we would just, uh, yep, uh, if there are further questions on.
Sorry, I still had another question as well.
Perfect. Okay, so then we're we're we'll we'll just about the first part of the motion then.
Be happy to second that motion. Um. I was just wondering also in these applications, has there been any talk about including the the building use in the evaluation criteria? In the future, if we're.
Maybe at a scope.
Uh, got it.
So uh currently, there are the use, the use is not a part of the uh um part of the criteria. And and also this is the last year of F I P program. We are working on a new grant program, which will also, which will uh cover the property located in uh in all H CDs and that could be uh one consideration for uh for the development of our new program.
Cool. My follow-up is gonna be, is there another program that's going to be implemented after this one's out? Okay, great.
Well, I think Ruby makes a great point there. If the property is being uh rec- used by a not-for-profit organization, something like that, I would give it more priority over private residents. Exactly.
Uh, yeah. Yes, uh, so the chair uh to the counselor, yes, I believe uh those was in our drafting uh in our drafting criteria right now. Uh, but um, so the new A O is still in fin- uh fin- finalizing. Uh, so uh, the detail would uh is not the detail is not complete yet, but uh we were certain add this to the to the new criteria in the new program.
You know when we're gonna see a draft of that? Just a a first draft or? Anything?
Yeah, uh, the new A O will also be reviewed and reviewed by the H A C, but uh uh, the um.
I can help answer that question.
Sure, sure.
Uh, my name is Kurt Pyle. I'm the manager of Heritage. Uh, in terms of the the revised criteria, we're hoping to have it by the end of the this fiscal year. So early, early in twenty twenty-six, it should be coming to to H A C.
Hey, thank you, Kurt.
I have a question. Sorry.
And Rosa?
Yeah, I was wondering if there is any any part of the process where a a building that receives funds under this ground, which is a conservation ground, then uh it's gonna be uh kind of a hmm, it's gonna be a candidate to be designated. So there is any any pro- you know, there are many buildings that are not registered as heritage properties because you know, for several reasons, either there is no time, you know, stuff is, you know, there is always priority, et cetera. But can this uh, if the building is not there, is not designated, can be a mechanism for which they have to present also some kind of a report or an assessment of uh of significance, so that uh the staff has the the tools and the uh the information to understand if it is a potential for being designated as a heritage property, so that uh if uh money is granted to a not-designated building, that becomes the pathway to become a heritage designated property.
Uh.
At least we have the, you know, if if an owner applies and doesn't have a designation uh heritage property, they have probably to submit some things to support that application and this can be taken to the next step. I don't know, I'm just thinking.
I can jump in on that one. Uh, just to the H A C is that under the heritage co- under the uh heritage conservation districts, after uh the area is designated, you cannot, I repeat, you cannot designate any more buildings as registered heritage properties. So after the, that's why they're identified as contributing heritage properties, not registered, because a- after the after the district has been established, you can't establish any more registered properties.
Okay, no, I understand that, but so means that either properties are within the boundary of a heritage designated district or are heritage designated property. They cannot be property just outside the boundary and no register. That's what the I probably didn't get on this.
No, they can't be from from outside.
Ah, okay, so that's okay. That's I understand. I didn't, I hadn't catch that uh detail. Thank you.
Okay. And uh, Simon, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I've just been uh doing a bit of motion crafting and uh have had uh further discussion uh with uh heritage planning staff. Uh, their review of the administrative order, there doesn't appear to be anything that would preclude a prioritization. So you know, if uh committee and staff are comfortable at this time, uh, instead of splitting the vote, uh, we can uh potentially uh propose an amendment uh for prioritization. Uh, I've just drafted uh one such potential amendment that I am uh uh just um uh, if you give me uh about uh another two seconds, I should be able to uh pop that in the chat. So just raising that as a a possible action. Uh, okay. There's a desire to do so and to uh uh to keep uh that mo- motion together.
Great, thank you. And um, is there any further discussion on? While we wait. Great, so.
Yeah.
We'll wait for that. Uh.
And I will just pot- pop that into the chat just now. And where uh councillor Hensby was interested in uh making that amendment, uh, I guess I would just uh reach out to uh councillor Hensby just to um uh to ask if that uh proposed wording meets the um the desired outcome.
Satisfies me.
Okay.
Great, so we just need a second there.
I'm moved.
Yep. So can we just uh read that that amendment?
Oh, yes.
So uh, folks uh, folks listening at home understand what we're uh proposing to do.
Yes, sorry.
It is moved by myself and seconded by Joanne, that the Heritage Advisory Committee amend part two of the motion to read to approve the reallocation of excess financial incentive program funds to standby list priorities and attached would be of the staff report dated May fifteen, twenty twenty-five, prioritizing twenty-six zero zero two before other properties. If any approved project in attachment A does not proceed or incurs expenses below the estimated amount, conditional upon the applicant's compliance with section seven and thirty-six to thirty-nine administrative order twenty twenty zero zero five A D M and the requirement specified in attachment C being satisfied. So duly moved.
Right, and uh we had Joanne second that, correct? Great. So um, we'll vote on that amendment. Um, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Those opposed? Uh, amendment passes. Uh, so now to vote on the motion with the amendment as a whole. Correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Perfect. Uh, all right, so all those in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed?
Uh, I believe there is uh, oh. Nope, sorry. Uh, I just saw Ruby's hand there. Just wanted to pause just to make sure um uh members didn't have any comments before we uh proceed. Oh, okay.
I was it? I don't see Ruby.
Yep, I think she might have just been bumped actually from the meeting.
Okay.
Promoting her now.
Okay, she's back. So Ruby, before you left, did you have any anything to contribute before?
Sorry, my Zoom.
Okay.
Tell me.
So all those in favor?
Uh.
Those opposed? I'm being motion carries. Thank you. So um, on to the next. Um, so number five, so Plan App twenty twenty-three zero zero nine nine one. The Heritage Development Agreement for eighty-six Octarlooney Street, Dartmouth, for a fifteen-story mixed-use development rehabilitation of a registered heritage property. And I'd like to invite uh a little bit of Cushing to uh make the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Okay. Would like to confirm everyone can see my screen.
Yep.
Perfect. All right. So good afternoon, Chair and members of the Heritage Advisory Committee. My name is Elizabeth Cushing and I'm a heritage planner with Planning and Development. Today I will be presenting the application for a development agreement on the registered heritage property located at eighty-six Octarlooney Street in Dartmouth. So an application was submitted by Zapp Consulting on behalf of the property owner, requesting to enter into a heritage development agreement to enable the construction of fifteen-story-plus penthouse mixed-use building behind the registered heritage property at eighty-six Octarlooney Street. The site also includes sixty-one Queen Street, which contains a building, thirty-nine Dundas Street, which is a vacant lot, and forty-three to forty-five Dundas Street, which contains a building. And these are all the subject properties located at the northeast portion of the block bound by Octarlooney Street, Dundas Streets, Queen Streets, and Wentworth Streets. These are some additional site context photos showing the unregistered historic building at sixty-one Queen Street to the left and the current building at forty-three to forty-five Dundas Street and the adjacent vacant lot at thirty-nine Dundas Street. Regional Council approved the substantial alterations for the property on November twelfth, twenty twenty-four, which included infill of unoriginal windows in the south and east elevations, one new window opening on the east elevation to reintroduce symmetry, removal of a small addition on the south elevation and construction of a seventy-two-point-nine-six-meter-high mixed-use development. Eighty-six Octarlooney Street was added to the Registry of Heritage Property in nineteen eighty-two as George Shields' house. The house is a one-and-a-half-story vernacular Gothic Revival-style residence. Character-defying elements include, but are not limited to, a steeply pitched gable with center-pointed window and two flanking Scottish dormers, rubblestone foundation, wood shingle cladding, and six over six windows with molded trim. The applicant proposes to rehabilitate and preserve at its current location the heritage building at eighty-six Octarlooney Streets. And the other aspects of the proposal include rehabilitation of the unregistered historic building at sixty-one Queen Street at its current location, uh demolition of the existing residential building at forty-three to forty-five Dundas Street, the consolidation of the four properties into a single lot, and then the construction of a new fifteen-story-plus penthouse mixed-use building at the current location of the building at forty-three to forty-five Dundas Street and the vacant property at thirty-nine Dundas Street. Conservation efforts include those that were approved through the substantial alteration application for George Shields' house. Uh, the unregistered historic building at sixty-one Queen Street will also be restored through the removal of the one-story front addition, the removal of a rear addition, and reinstatement of fenestration. So both properties will also require replacement in kind of siding, repointing brick chimneys, replacement in kind of wood windows and doors, and foundation restoration efforts. The subject site is designated downtown and lies within the historic Dartmouth precinct under the Regional Centre Secondary Municipal Planning Strategy. This precinct promotes low-rise development through maximum floor ratio limits, or F A R, and design regulations to support the area's historic character. The site is zoned downtown Dartmouth and is exempt from front and flanking setback requirements. The subject property has a maximum F A R of two-point-two-five and it is within the proposed downtown Dartmouth Heritage Conservation District. The Regional Centre Land Use Bylaw allows a maximum height of ninety meters. This application is being considered under policy C H R seven of the Regional Centre Secondary Municipal Planning Strategy, which permits council to consider a development agreement on any lot containing a registered heritage building that exceeds the requirements of the underlying zone to encourage the preservation and adaptive reuse of registered heritage buildings. So in this case, the proposal is within the height limits for the area and has a F A R of seven-point-seven. This increase in F A R has been deemed acceptable based on the level of conservation efforts for both the registered and the unregistered historic building and the standard and guidelines evaluation. The full staff evaluation of the proposal against the standards and guidelines for the conservation of historic places in Canada can be found in attachment B. The proposal preserves all character-defying elements of George Shields' house, such as the rubblestone foundation, brick chimneys, six over six windows and Scottish dormers. Repairs or replacements will be done in kind based on evidence with minimal intervention as the new construction is separate from the heritage building. There's only one new opening that is proposed to reintroduce the symmetry. New constructions podium uses compatible materials like the non-combustible clapboard siding and real stone for the foundation. The new construction is physically separate from both the historic buildings, which creates open space and encourages pedestrian engagement with the buildings. Mid-rise is distinguishable through its modern materials and form. So overall, the design respects the character-defying So overall, the design respects the character-defying elements, setbacks, and materials meeting standards one through twelve. A public mailout was sent to property owners within the notification area to inform residents of the proposal, provide information, to submit feedback, and advise of the public information meeting, which was held on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Staff received written submissions from three residents. The public expressed concerns regarding construction impacts, heritage development agreement policy, and tree retention. A construction mitigation plan must be provided uh, at the permitting stage, which will address public consultation and construction impacts. The applicant will also be required to meet all relevant policies pertaining to construction noise and circulation during the construction of the new development and provide notifications of any disruptions or construction delays. A tree protection plan is required, which must be reviewed and accepted by H R M Urban Forestry. The development agreement also includes building and architectural requirements to align with policy and the standards and guidelines, such as the podium height of two stories and clapboard material that is compatible with the heritage building. We are currently at the H A C review stage of the Heritage Development Agreement process. So should the development agreement be recommended for approval by H A C, it'll proceed to first reading at Harbor East Marine Drive Community Council. The following recommendations before H A C for their consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth Cushing. Uh, so I'll have someone make the motion.
I can. If nobody else wants to.
Please.
Uh, it is recommended that the Heritage Advisory Committee recommend that the Harbor East Marine Drive Community Council, one, give notice of motion to consider the proposed development agreement as set out in attachment A to enable the construction of a fifteen-story-plus penthouse mixed-use building behind the registered heritage property located at eighty-six Opterloony Street, Dartmouth, and schedule a public hearing. Two, approve the proposed development agreement, which shall be substantially of the same form as set out in attachment A. And three, require the agreement be signed by the property owner within a hundred and twenty days for any extension thereof granted by council on request of the property owner from the date of final approval by council and any other bodies as necessary, including applicable appeal periods, whichever is later. Otherwise, this approval will be void and obligations arising hereunder shall be at an end.
Thank you. Now a second there.
I second.
So Rosa. Okay, so is there any discussion on the motion?
File a comment when it comes to the, to the Harbor East Marine Drive Community Council. Could there be a picture of the building that's being removed from the site be included? I'm, I'm looking at the picture on Schedule C of eighty-six Opterloony. I assume that's the building I'm behind and I'm looking at if the building is to be removed. So I thought we would have a picture of the building that's gonna be demolished just to have a, in reference, reference to the report.
Uh, through the chair to the councillor, there is a picture of the property on slide three of the PowerPoint. I can pull that up if it's helpful here. I know it was a little bit confusing. There's a lot going on with this one. So I could just show that quickly. Right. So the property being removed is the yellowish-green one here, but I will make sure that that is more clear when we go to community council.
So.
Was, was there any significance to that building?
Uh, the, through the chair to the councillor, the applicant did submit a heritage impact statement completed by a member of the Canadian Association of Heritage Professionals and they did a historical overview of the property and it was built in the nineteen thirties and used as rental housing. There's been quite a few alterations to the back to accommodate some more, uh, multi-unit function. Uh, so there was pretty limited heritage value.
Okay, just like an old barn has been renovated to a house. So, all right, thanks.
Great. Thank you. And Rosa, you had?
Yeah, I had a question about the, um, uh, change to the front elevation of the, just a moment. The eighty-six, uh, Opterloony Street. Uh, the ramp seems to be a new addition, a new element. So instead, it seems to be kind of in style in kind with the, the, with the, um, with the house and with the, the heritage decoration of the house. Has, uh, has been any, any design that would make it distinguishable? Kind of legible as a new intervention compatible with it? Seems to be quite, um, you know, miss, uh, a little bit pretending to be historic whereas it's not.
Sure. My, my apologies. So through the chair to the member, can you clarify the architectural element that you're referencing on?
The architectural element that I'm referencing is the ramp on the front elevation, the north front elevation of the house. Seems to be quite in style, although it's clearly a new element. So why this choice? And I have another question as well, another clarification to ask. Many of the component, the architectural component, uh, are either replaced slash repaired. So is there any condition assessment which looks in detail on what is being replaced and what is in kind and what is being repaired? And why is, are element beyond, uh, repair? And have, have, have they been analyzed?
Of course. So through the chair to the committee member, uh, in regards to the first question, we did ask that the applicants make the ramp a little bit uh, more compatible with the historic character. So having the wood spindles, I mean, that is a, a good point about the distinguishability, but, uh, we wanted to ensure that we kind of lean towards more of the heritage and historic feel for that, uh, structure. Uh, in relation to oh, the condition assessment, we would look at like the heritage impact statement that was completed for this application to speak to some of those elements.
Right. Are, are those available? Probably they were assessed in another meeting. I was not there.
Oh, sure. Uh, the heritage impact statement is also available through the planning application website as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Um, did anyone else have any comments? Great. So we'll put this to the vote. All those in favor? Was it opposed? One, uh, so motion carries.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So next up is, so the date of our next meeting is August twenty-seventh. And, uh, with that, I'll just need, uh, someone to make the motion to adjourn.
So move.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. Have a good day.
Thank you all.
Everyone take care.
Thank you.